Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for Monday, August 8th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. I'll announce who is in attendance, Officer Fox Chairman, myself, Vice Chairman Doug Moguland, Clerk Jason Perron, Administrative Officer Carl Steinhardt is on Zoom, and Administrative Assistant Robin Solak. Let's see, the first thing we need to do is a pledge of allegiance. Marcus, as a veteran, would you lead us off, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. All right, next thing I have here is public comments. It gives anyone an opportunity to speak that's not on the agenda. I'd ask you to raise your hands and stand and come forward, use the microphone because the acoustics in this room are terrible. Please state your agenda. And I see a hand that went up. Marcus?
We need to push the button until it turns green, about three seconds. It's green. Hi, Marcus Phelps, 28 Epo Street, and also the Chair of the Master Plan Advisory Committee. I'd like to start by thanking you for being an active participant on the committee and helping us with our planning process. Currently, we have a survey out for residents and business owners to complete. The survey's been out about a month, and we have so far 400 responses. So we're pretty excited about that. We're a little short in the age group 30 and under. We haven't had a lot of responses from those folks. So we're hoping to get a few more. We have some signs out now, and we're doing a little more public outreach to get more participation. After the survey is completed, it's due August 31st, and when that's finished, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission will be putting the information together. And then in October, on October 13th, which is a Thursday, in the evening, we'll be having a community listening and visioning session. And also, on the 15th of October, which is a Saturday, we'll be having a similar visioning process. And we hope to have childcare available so people with children would be able to come out and participate. The website where the survey is available is southwick2040.com. So hopefully the word will keep getting out and we'll get more responses. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak under public comments in this room? Please take and state your name and address, sir.
My name is Dominic Ferrettra from 133 Berkshire Avenue, Southwick. A couple of questions. I don't know how this really works. This is my first time coming to a meeting.
We do not answer questions, sir. It's just an opportunity for you to make a statement to the board.
Okay. I don't know how these do get answered, but a statement to the board I have is I'm a small business owner right here in downtown Southwick, and I'm having a couple of problems there. One, I don't know if the town can address it, but there's no mail service, which is awful through that whole stretch. None of us can get any mail, except for some reason, Virgil Beck and a few people that have post office boxes, went to the post office and said, why can't I get mail? They don't come up with a real answer. Well, we have to put a mailbox up for your place. Well, first, put a mailbox in front of that place. What's the hole? What's stopping? Southwick, people that own all those businesses can't get any mail. Talked to the guy at the service station, same way, no mail. The guy behind me can't get his driver's license because he only has a post office box. They don't ship his license to a post office box. So how is he supposed to even get his new driver's license? They don't deliver any post office boxes. Also, my next question is cell service. I have my, basically my phone for charges. Every time someone, every single time, well, most times the people come in my place, they charge something. It just goes round and round and round because it doesn't connect. There's hardly any cell service. I'm seeing the same thing. I went to get lunch at the lake. They're having the same, sat there for 10 minutes, wants to go round and round. They couldn't get my charge to go through because there was no connection. Nothing wrong with the card, just no connection. And then my third point are town tax bills. I don't have a problem with it being four times a year. The problem I have is I have to be here to basically bring in here. If the mail rises into a system where I can click on my address, find out my tax bill, pay my tax bill, and then it's done. Or can I pay it a year ahead of time? Because I'm gone a lot of times here. There's a lot more elderly people likely to travel or not here. Then all of a sudden, you miss your tax bill. Not intentionally, which was happening to me last time. I had no idea I was there on my tax bill. What can be done so we can pay our bill through the internet or some way of getting that done? So that's basically what I had to say today.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You sit. Come on up.
Diane Gill, Five Point Grove Road. Following up on what Dom just said, and in other meetings, public comments, you don't respond with an answer or a cop or you're on the comments. And I would like to suggest that you contemplate a new section on your agenda at the end of the meeting. That is a one-way only. It is Select Board Forum, or Select Board Response, or Select Board Feedback, or something. The questions people ask are of public concern, interest, and sometimes, you know, you said, well, send that to me by an email and I'll get back to you. But others would like to know the answers as well, and this would give you perhaps an opportunity to address those. Thank you.
Is there anyone else under public comments?
Michelle Rat, 152 Kirkshire Ave. So at your last meeting on July 25th, Russ had stated that you toured the lake and that you were organizing boards and committees to address the issues at North Pond. So that's excellent. Thank you very much. That definitely needs to happen about that. You had stated that the issues are a lot more concerning on the property, and I'm not sure exactly how you're assessing that. I think in the big picture, if we look at the history of the property, it's far better than it was in the past. In the 1940s, there were 36 cottages, a dance hall, a marina, a store, a bathhouse, people everywhere, cars driving down the roads, all of that. Actually, you wanted to kind of continue that practice by having that property developed. We know that from the past, and I'm not going to get into that right now. But having developed that property, we definitely have had a huge environmental impact in terms of fertilizer running off into the lake, in terms of docks with boats with gas, in terms of septic systems and things like that. But now, it's a big push for conservation. And you told people last time that there cannot be a beach, and that people cannot swim there. You mentioned that this was stated in the order of conditions. There isn't one. I think what you meant was the conservation restriction, right? I think you were into. A conservation restriction is purchased in order to help retain the premises in its natural condition for conservation, nature preservation, recreation, and things like that. So it's excellent that we have that. And it's passive recreation, you know, that we want over there. We won't want dirt bikes and quads and things like that. We want to keep that property in its natural condition. Well, it's natural condition, it's a beach in our lifetime. Mr. King spoke about it in reflections on Khan Khan. You can go on KhanKhan.org and look at what CRC has there. And he spoke about how his grandfather used to lumber that property, and how he realized the recreational value. And he brought in sand and made it a beach. And that was in 1940, before you and I were alive. So in that conservation restriction, I mean, I don't know if you've read it. It's 114 pages, but I read it. In those 114 pages, they call the beach a beach seven times. It has photos of the beach labeled as "the beach." Nowhere does it say, there cannot be a beach. The property is for passive recreation. Passive recreation seems like walking. You said no swimming. I don't know where you got that. Where does it say no swimming? In fact, the fact is, conservation restriction can't say no swimming. Conservation restrictions about land use. Swimming occurs in water. So furthermore, I want to know if this board voted on having to call a shoreline and not being able to use for a beach. Because when Mr. Fox spoke about it, at the end of your meeting, neither of you guys spoke up. So I'm assuming the silence means that you agreed. And if you didn't, then I hope that when you get this item on your agenda, you would speak about how you feel about it. Otherwise, I think we have to assume that you aren't agreement. So I'm hoping that you come to the CRC meeting tomorrow night at 7:00, and explain to all your constituents on how you're planning to deny access to this property that the town spent millions of dollars to preserve. We have 600 people show up at a special meeting. 400 people vote to preserve that property. When they voted for that, they expected to be able to use it. They expected to be able to walk on it. They expected to be able to swim. They expected to be able to go onto the sandy beach and swim, pull up on their boats. That's what we expected. If that wasn't the case, that needed to be conveyed to the voters. If you weren't going to let people swim there, if you weren't going to let people use that property in a certain way, you needed to tell people before they voted. If you had an attorney there, you could have all those answers. That property is for conservation. We would like to see you guys get instead of those boards and committees like you're talking about doing, that's awesome. Cooperatively, thinking in terms of conservation, and really thinking in terms of recreation. We're a recreational community, and thinking about the voters that you represent, and what their intention was when that property was preserved and not a personal agenda. Thank you very much.
Any other public comments? Is there any public comments under?
Yes, sir. Deborah?
Deborah, can you hear us?
I can.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Deborah Harrah, Three Shore Road in Southwick, of course. I'd like to thank the Health Department for sending out the notice that the South Beach was, South Pond Public Beach that belongs to the town, has been closed. I think it would have been great if we had been notified earlier. I believe they knew on Friday that the count was high. I would also like to suggest that for the safety of the residents, that other places in town be tested. I know legally, they don't have to, but it would be nice to know that as the water flows further south, that those of us on South Pond and elsewhere don't have to worry about the E coli. Thanks very much.
Anybody else on Zoom?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we are going to go to a meeting with the Town Clerk, Treasurer, Collector, and the Finance Committee regarding early voting, election schedule expenses, and staffing requirements. And I see our Town Clerk and Assistant at the back of the room. There is a microphone there. We have an extra microphone right there for the Finance Committee. Michelle Hill is our Town Clerk, Treasurer, Collector, and for the record, I did point this out at the annual town meeting. She just received her Masters in Public Administration. It was in our folder. So I'd like to publicly recognize you, and I have it on the record, and congratulate you for that achievement.
Thank you. So tonight, I'm here, first of all, I'm going to say thank you to coming together, the FinCon and the board's agreement, to talk about some changes that have just occurred with the election law that is now going to really change a huge dynamic to the office. I think a lot of you guys are aware that early voting was made an option during the pandemic, and we kind of hope that was kind of that pandemic thing, but it's now became a reality as a permanent thing. So with that comes early voting by mail, which is a very time-consuming, and I will get to that, the package of stuff I gave you, and early voting. Before all this happened, meaning COVID and these changes by mail, the only thing we had, I believe it was established in 2016, 2017, I can't remember, it was a couple of years ago, where it was only for the state election. Now everything is for the primary, and now the local election. And the local election is a hot down situation if we choose to do so. However, I find that hard to do when they're able to do early voting in any capacity for other elections. So, but that is a future discussion that we will have to have actually kind of soon. But in your package, I did provide a summary as to some of the changes. I don't know if they come.
Nobody got this?
Sue.
Let's take two. Can we make copies really quick? Just this one paper, I think this.
Well, actually, I'd love to have this. Yes, because this is a great visual, and I'm going to go through it with you guys.
All right. Then what I'm going to do is until we get those papers by, I'm going to go on to other things. Everybody can have a drink of water and relax, but we're going to go on to other things, just so they can keep on schedule. All right. Payables, payroll in minutes. I'd like to acknowledge Special Payables Warrant Number 2305B dated 8/3/22 in an amount of $10,787.50. Acknowledged Payables Warrant Number 2304B dated 7/26/22 in the amount of $947,660.71. Acknowledged Payroll Warrant Number 2303 dated 8/22 in the amount of $270,608.34. Acknowledged Special Payables Warrant Number 2305B dated 8/3/22 for $10,787.52. Need a motion to accept the open session minutes dated 7/25/22.
Doug Moguland, so move.
Okay, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguland, aye.
Jason Perron, aye. Yeah, yeah. Okay, executive session minutes dated 7/25/22. They were announced to you just a minute ago. If you could read those. Doug Moguland, so move. Jason Perron, second. Okay, roll call. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguland, aye.
Jason Perron, aye. It's like we have that, please. I'm going to go to the MOA for the United Public Service Employees Union, Local 424 Unit, Mass. Division 107. This is a Southwick Library Employees for the Union Member Working Hours Change. I think we reviewed it in executive session. It was reviewed by Labor Council, and it's looking for a motion for the Chair to authorize signing the agreement between the employee for a change of hours due to maternity leave. So I would need a motion to authorize the Chair to sign the agreement.
Doug Moguland will make the motion for the Chair to sign.
Jason Perron, second. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguland, aye.
Jason Perron, aye. All right. I'm going to give you a couple of minutes just to look at it. We're going to keep going here. We have a recommendation from the Southwick Fire Department, Fire Chief and Deputy Chief. They interviewed two individuals for the fulfilling the career position of Fire Prevention Officer. This is a, one of our full-time employees, and they made a recommendation to this board as a personal board, and as fire commissioners, they recommend firefighter Brian Schneider. Discussion or motion? No discussion.
Doug Moguland will make a motion to appoint Brian Schneider.
Jason Perron, second. All right, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguland, aye.
Jason Perron, aye. All right. Finance Committee comfortable at this point? Are we still reading?
Chairman Fox, is it okay that I read from this?
Go ahead.
So fiscal, for fiscal year '22, the town approved an additional staff member as a part-time level for the Treasurer Collector for Southwick. The added position was for the change in the tax collections in '22 that went from semi to quarterly, and the overall need for the demands in the office. Southwick is the last, and I want to repeat, the last town out of 351 cities and towns in the state of Massachusetts that holds a Treasurer Collector Clerk combination. With new election laws, changes in tax collections, and COVID changes, the staff has been extremely overwhelmed. On June 22nd, 2022, the vote, it's called the Votes Act, has been signed into law, making a lot of those COVID items that had mailed ballots into the nature, now in a temporary, I'm sorry, in a permanent status. These changes include, but not limited to, two. Primary elections now have early voting along with the state. Local elections now will have early voting along unless we cut out. Last state to register to vote went from a three-hour OT on a Wednesday to an eight-hour OT on a Saturday that also includes more than one person. So that right there is a huge dollar. Early voting is mandated on the weekend, so we can't even walk away from the thought of a weekend. It is mandatory. Back before, it was optional. Now it's mandatory. Vote by mail is permanent and has several processing components and is time-consuming. Recuerde this. Yeah, you can show it to the audience behind us. So before any of these changes, there was a very simple process, okay? It's basically a three-step process. The voter comes to the polls and mark the ballot, and go in a ballot box, okay? The only thing that was offered was absentee ballots, and it was very little for the town of Southwick. You flip over. I'm going to make a note that I did not create this, actually. It's the Town Clerk, Catherine Ellsworth, who allowed us as other town clerks to take your data. So I thought it was very educational to show you guys. And this piece right here now shows you that is a 12-step process, just for ballots, okay, that are coming in, between them getting the application, us receiving the application, doing our verifications. A lot of them don't fill it out correctly. We have to get with the people, whether we do phone calls or mailing, you know, however, you know, the situation pans out, all the way to the data entering, and then we put ballots together, and then we mail them out. It's 12 steps. What I disagree about what's on here is that she says it takes seven, seven minutes per ballot. I disagree. It's 10, easy. So for the last state election, early voting alone, just not in person, just for mailing, was 1,800. So if you add all that and do the math, it was like 200 and something hours. Just trying to give you a visual to understand that it's not a simple process. That's really what the whole focus here on this chart. Jessica and I have endured the 2020 changes by working extra long hours. There is so much involved in every election process. With the new and now permanent changes, the TCC Office cannot continue without additional help. When elections are upon us, Jessica and I are primary the election. We primarily are doing the election. While everyone else is working on dealing with, you know, the phone calls that are coming in, and people at the counter, or the residents, or taxpayers, or whomever is coming to the counter. So the current staff levels are struggling with these demands. So I'm requesting either a full-time employee or an added part-time, combined with the current part-time that we have, that will at least give me a full-time body there that is there all the time. On the back, I go into just showing you the breakdown for the last three years with regards to the budget. The first year is kind of, it's kind of hard, actually. It's not an apple-to-apple comparison. Number two and three will be an apple-to-apple comparison. I say that because the first one was brought in because of the COVID and the short, some people, I didn't have it shortened. Some people were not there because we were home on COVID or whatever the case may be, and I want to rephrase that. Jess and I were not home. So we had to have something and fill in the gap there. But '22, we closed out the year where I had to go and ask for more money just to cover for the part-time person. And then we're on track already for '23 probably to do the same thing. The current person who is in the part-time position wants to remain part-time. So it's, I would probably be looking for another part-time person. So if I can at least get that full-time. So that's what this is about. I do have granting funds that I've used for a lot of the state election that we have by buying the boxes outside that is for the mailing. I bought a few other things, and the town has helped with any gaps that I've had with regards to elections. But I will use as much as I possibly can with regards to all that to any OT, because as of right now, last week, just in two days, we processed 500 ballots. So. We're also starting to see foot traffic enhance, and I don't know if it's because of the situation that might have occurred at a post office. So people were ferrying, dropping their stuff in other places, so they'd rather come in person. You don't blame them. But it's nonetheless, it's a lot of the traffic that's coming through. So at this time, I am asking that you please consider that. But while there's one intention, I have more to tell you if you don't mind. After our budget was put together, one of our printer vendors has closed business, and I think it all had to do with COVID. So I had to find another printer vendor, printer vent vendor. Can't talk today, apologize. Anyways, and it's going to affect our budget. And in addition, I also got another sad letter from our attorney and the state. All their fees have gone up by hundreds of dollars, and so has our, so I kind of got hit all around in the last couple of weeks. And it's why I'm in front of you to let you know that my budget needs to be reviewed, and if it means that as a time I need it, I can come back, I can do that. But the main reason I'm here is for the elections and the part-time person. And I know there's been several people in the FinCon that have worked the elections, and they do see the amount of work that goes into elections. And I appreciate that.
All right. We're going to begin a discussion with Finance Committee and the board, but I just want to make one comment that we need to look at and get an answer on. I've seen emails going back and forth. This is an unfunded mandate, okay? Under the law, we're supposed to be compensated for this. All right. So I think one of the things that we have to seriously look at is filing with the Auditor's Office and seeing exactly, and banding together with other, especially smaller communities, to where's this money going to come from? And I think we should look at that. I think we should discuss what you're asking, but I think that should be on the table. That would be my opinion.
I agree with you as far as unfunded. I also would like to just point out once again, no one was hired knowing that they are mandated to have to work Saturdays now too. So that's other things that I have to work with, and hence the reason why Jess and I have been taking on most of this stuff. So that plays into part of the, not only unfunded, but you know what, they were hired to work on these Friday, you know, and now we have this mandated working Saturdays. So how many Saturdays would they have to work? It's all for the elections. So it's, right now, we are in the primary status, so we just have the one Saturday. I have to look at the state and just verify if we might have two. I have to double check that. Immediately before the election, if somebody's Saturday, they have to work.
Linda, I'm going to ask everybody, because we are on Zoom, to state your name and your position when you speak.
Okay, Karen, can I have finance?
Okay, just for the clarification. Mr. Fox?
Yes, sir. We have reached out to the Senator's Office and the State Rep, and we have raised these concerns about the need to secure additional funding because of this issue. And Senator Veles did say that that would be something that was going to be examined by the legislature. So we'll have to see what comes out of that, whether or not that was in the So we'll have to see what comes out of that, whether or not that was in the form of any new dollars that have been appropriated for the Secretary of State's office through the state budget, or how these particular forms of aid or grant might flow into the different cities and towns who are affected by this.
No, that was the emails I was referring to that I saw going back and forth. And thank you for doing that, Carl. Who'd like to speak next?
Olivia Maria from the Big Con. Two questions. For regular full-time employees, is Saturday straight overtime, if it was overtime or zero differential per project or weekend hour? So is it a higher amount that we are paying?
It's time and a half. And I'm staying away from Sundays by putting it all on Saturday, because the way it reads is that you can do Saturday and Sunday and split the amount of hours between the two. I'm only doing Saturday, because Sunday and Sunday, I think we're still time and a half, but when I was thinking of that, it was double time, so I wanted to make sure we stayed away from that.
Okay. So yeah, so early voting is mandatory on the weekends, so it's not specified both days, so we can choose Saturday or Sunday.
We have to do X amount over a course of a weekend, so I'm choosing to do it all in one day.
Okay. Yeah. My next question is on the new 12-step process. On step eight, if the review for completion, if no send letter ballot rejected, is there a chance for the voter to remediate that? And if so, do they restart back at step two when they resend? Or is that ballot no longer allowed to be circulated? My question is on volume. So if you have rejected ballots, are they actually, does that increase your volume with mail-in ballots? And technically remediated ballots?
So this is on an individual. I think it's rejected for some reason. Let's just say that they got on their end. They filled out the ballot. They then put it in the one envelope, and that one envelope goes in the other envelope that has the posters we sent to us. They failed to fill out the interim. That is a rejection, unfortunately.
So that's what I'm asking. So it stops, that you don't send it back to the voter saying that you're notified separately, you're rejected, and that is it for that election?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
They have an option, which, again, we're not mandated by law to send anything out saying we've rejected your ballot, okay? But they can go to the actual. I'm going to let you guys know, we literally take it upon ourselves to do stuff outside that the law doesn't say, and we make phone calls. We have been making phone calls all week, because on that postcard that you got, some will, they're not affiliated with the party, it's on your left-hand side, okay? On the right hand, you pick your elections, most are picking off. When you pick all, there's a primary on there. If you have no affiliation, you better tell us what ballot, no different when you're coming in person. So we have taken initiative to make phone calls, to try to find a phone call, to speed this process up. We do the same thing. If something were to get rejected, and we know why it got rejected, we're going to make a phone call.
Mr. Chairman, can you just?
Better use the mic. Okay, talk loudly.
Yeah, David Murphy. I just wanted to ask, can you clarify, are we voting on something tonight, or is this just information sharing?
As far as I'm concerned, this is informational at this point. Finance Committee will go back and do their deliberations at their next meeting. We're going to do our deliberations, then I'm going to suggest a joint meeting, because this is talking about funding that was not discussed at an annual town meeting. But I think we need to do this quickly.
Presentation. What's the forum for voting on whether or not we opt out of the town vote, the town mail-in or not? Is that among just the selectmen, or is that, how was that spoken?
Can I, good question. I have a lot of information on it, but I would like to go to my September training and get it from the state, out of the, as they say, the horse's mouth, okay? With regards to every tea I need to process, I need to die before I present it to the board and such, so.
Yeah, and I'd like to suggest there's probably some pros and cons that would be helpful to know in terms of, you know, how many citizens have taken advantage of it or, and can we, if we opt out now, are we opted out forever, or can we consider it next year, things like that?
That's actually a good question. That is one that I did not see in the write-up. So that would be questions that we ask in September.
This is typical David, though. They pass a law.
Yes.
And before all the questions are answered, and then once we proceed, then they change the rules.
And just think about us in the office, they're changing it the ninth hour, and we have to adapt fast.
Right. But this is typical, so.
Mr. Chairman, they'll be kinder, I mean, she'll go to that meeting and get an update, and then there'll be more information coming before both boards. So there'll be time to step into this process. It's not an emergency at the moment, but once we get all the information and we see what the costs are for the elections coming up, as well as the primary into the fall, then we can see what the grant funds might be there. We can see if there's going to be other awards coming from the state government. And then if need be, we can step into the situation with a Finance Committee Reserve request to buy us time to get through a good portion of the year, and then we'll have time through the budget process if we need to make any other further structural or permanent changes.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Carl. And we can adapt, as we always have. But we know what's right around the corner, and that's going to be way too much, this is a presidential election.
Yep.
So we definitely have to prepare for that.
Yep. Questions? Suggestions?
Well, I think we're going to have to, I mean, there's a couple of things, and I'd like to tie in one of the public comments. Dominic raised a good point. I took a note, it's something I wanted to come back to, but, you know, certainly that's something we should look at. One of the items that Dominic mentioned tonight was, how can we lessen some of the pressure at the window? Maybe we can do more stuff online for bill payment, and people can see their bill, pay their bill online without having to go through and get the mail, and then come in and either mail in a check or come in and push. Not for discussion today, just it was a suggestion made in public comment. I don't want to hit you on that.
It's already had that on.
So we can get back to, maybe we need to do a better job of publicizing that so that folks like Dominic or anyone else can take advantage of it, take off the pressure. And then, you know, as far as, you know, as Carl said, with, you know, the structure of the Town Treasure Clerk Collector's Office, one is too large to fit on a business car anyway, but we need to probably figure that out, you know, we are the last one. But, you know, maybe we need to look at that overall and, you know, and look in the whole piece of municipal, you know, how we're handling all that. But this, this isn't the first mandate we've dealt with, right, in the last couple of years?
Correct.
Even just the last several years. And we're fortunate that the state auditor actually has been very good and very decent towards Western Mass, at least in calling out the problems. Doesn't always solve them, because it's up to the legislature to address and fund an unfunded mandate that they've been called out to do, but our constitution falls for that. They don't always do it, but that's what the constitution falls for. But, I mean, certainly this, you have to bring it up. We have to, you know, chew on the nails and understand what the problems are and how we're going to systemically approach it and solve it.
I appreciate. I'm asking you guys to do, because we made it through. It was pretty tough, but we made it through very long hours and practically just needed a cotton there, you know, to get through the presidential election. And that's going to be the same thing coming up if we're not addressing some of these issues.
I know I texted you a few times when I drove through the town hall parking lot to make sure that you were okay here, because the light were on at very late. I hear you.
Michelle, when is your training in September?
September 17 through the 20th, I believe.
Okay. So we will wait until?
Well, that's for the local. I mean, I'm going to get everything at that training, but I'm going to focus on the local so I can bring it back to you guys as far as the details.
So you've made us aware, given us something to review.
Thank you.
I think we all realize the problem or the challenge, and we're going to go forward. We're going to find a solution, and we should hopefully have better information when we make our decision. And if, in fact, we make a decision and then we see we need to modify it in the future, we can. You know, we're not stuck in concrete yet. Any other questions from the? Mr. Diddy?
Joe Diddy, Finance Committee? You can pay more in July, correct?
Yes.
What is the fee, though? I always hear the complaint about the fee. Do you know roughly what that fee is to pay, huh?
3%. I think if you say.
If you pay by card, you pay a percentage. If you pay by your checking account, it's 50 cents. But you have to sign up as a Unibank user to be able to access the online bills to view your bill online.
Reset has a cap, but it's a lot greater, so it's small.
So that tends of a big question, though. If it's, who's charging the 50 cents Unibank? So it would be interesting to take a look at that, because if that ends up saving the town a couple thousand bucks a year.
We're not, we're not charging.
I get it. But if the Unibank is, maybe we would end up be better off to eat the 50 cents and have them send us a bill for the 500 people that now pay? That's, so what are we talking about, right? 250 dollars or whatever? And you take 200 people out of, or 500 people out of the window, right? So you just got to look at, just, you know, a suggestion off the cuff, right? But it might be something worth looking into. If it drives, if there is a small cost, but it drives a larger cost savings, and especially in manpower, person power, we should entertain it and look at it.
There's still more work on our end that does happen, and I've never been asked to tell me how we can spend money, so I will definitely look into that for me.
Finance Committee will probably take me on in the parking lot on the way out, but that's okay.
There is, yes, there is like three tiers that we'd have to look at, but some of it's variable where we don't know.
Yeah. I know we talked a lot about it during COVID, right? When this first came up and we were trying to find ways of having people be able to pay online and stuff like that. It was brought to my attention that we have some of it, but we need to do a better job, I think, as a town, to get the word out on how you do it, whether it's on the website or in, I dare say, the next mailing, say, you know, for those that do get it, hey, if you want to pay your bill online, here's how you do it. It probably already is in there. I know me, I just like coming to see you, so I always come down here with my bill and a check, right? But, you know, we should just figure out how to take, you know, leverage what we already have.
I have done several mailings in the past. I can do some more, but I'm going to go back and just double-check, because I thought we had the website put on the bill, but I'll double-check that. Yeah. So I have kind of explored a lot of them, so we're getting a new vendor, because the other one just went out of business, as I mentioned earlier. So maybe this new vendor, you could have us help out with some more advertising piece of it. Now look into the monetaries for it as well.
I don't want to go off the rails around elections, but it was just, you know, it's kind of part and parcel through this, the whole office, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
From the board, comments, questions? Finance Committee, comments, questions? Well.
Go around at everybody.
Why don't you, right, why don't we, we have some new members on the Finance Committee, so why don't we begin right here? You could state your name.
Joe Diddy.
David Murphy.
Robert Rocha.
Olivia Maria.
Thank you very much for a very difficult, yeah. All right. And Michelle, thank you. Jessica, thank you. All right, we have some homework to do, and we're going to come back to this late September. Yeah. All right, I'm going to take one thing out of order, because we have our fire chief sitting in the back of the room, and we want him out there doing his job rather than sitting in here listening to me talk. So with that, Chief Anderson, you have a presentation you would like us to help make with you?
I do, I do. You're aware of our newest candidate, Lizzie. Lizzie graduated from the Fire Academy here on Friday. Lizzie not only graduated from the Fire Academy, but also graduated top in her class. So that's a first result. Both academics, physical skills testing, your peers, and all your associates all waiting for that. It's really quiet here. So can I, it was typically she's clear for interior structure, so as tradition, we'd like to use that here with your yellow helmet.
Let's try this corner.
Sticking to this. All right. One, say five.
Don't say that.
Thank you, Chief.
I do.
Chief Anderson, Select and Mogul said that she was the only female recruit in that entire class.
That class, yeah.
And was the tops, by far, from what I heard. All right. We're back to our agenda, our 6:15 appointment at 6:45. All right, this is an opportunity for people that we've given for reappointments or like to be considered for appointment, opportunity to the board. I see some people that have already spoken. I see some names where people said that they're submitting their resume, their email was sufficient, they did not have to come in front of the board. So is there anyone here on this list? I have Marissa Cook Obergan, Kevin Solak, Andy Reardon for Conservation Commission, Economic Development, Jack Cody, Historical, Richard, excuse me, Marcel, Lake Management, Deb Barat, Full Member and Associate, Rick Wyatt?
Wylot.
Wylot, and W.K. Phillips. So any of those people here are on Zoom that would like to speak? I got one hand up in the back. Come on up, and there's a microphone right there. Do you have any other people on Zoom? Just one. Anybody else in the room? Just one. And, and Marissa, you're applying for two positions, so I'm going to let you talk first on one, then talk second on the other one, please.
Okay, good evening, Office of the Select Board.
You've got to speak a little bit louder.
All right, good evening. Good evening, thank you for having me. Right, so with respect to conservation, I thought I would just read my conservation letter of interest. It's pretty concise, but I think it covers a little bit of my experiences and what I've done so far on the commission. Dear Office of the Select Board, I am ready to express my interest in reappointing to the Southwick Conservation Commission. Since joining the Conservation Commission in 2019, I have learned how this kind of commission serves an important role in communities across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in protecting wetlands. While the learning curve for understanding state laws, regulations, and jurisdiction with respect to wetlands was initially steep upon joining this commission, it has been very rewarding to work with my fellow commissioners to help Southwick protect its natural resources. As a landscape designer who works in developing site plans, I feel I have been able to positively contribute to this commission, particularly in the area of advising on planting for remediation and for erosion control, which are two significant areas the Conservation Commission oversees. Also, as a member of the Agricultural Commission, I have worked on foster connection and communication between the commissions, which has been helpful as the commissions overlap on some goals and benefit from understanding each other's aims and activities. I would love the opportunity to continue serving the Conservation Commission and serve ours after that. Thank you, considering my reappointment.
Did you want to speak separately on agriculture? I think that's enough.
I think the only thing that I'd like to mention, Mr. Chairman, with respect to agriculture is I really do think that it is important for boards and commissions and committees in the town to have a connection with each other. There is a lot of overlap, particularly with agriculture and conservation. In light of the discussion earlier and some of the public comments, it's just very important to foster that sort of communication. So I would like the opportunity to be able to continue serving the commission to fortify that bond and that relationship, and I think is so important, especially as Southwick is changing, it's developing. Projects like Nort upon really do require, I think, multidisciplinary and creative thinking for collaboration. So thank you. Projects like Norah Pond really do require, I think, multidisciplinary and creative thinking for, and collaboration. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, last call. Anybody else on Zoom or in this room? I don't see any hands going up, anything on Zoom. Okay, all right, then we're moving on to, back over to our items. Act on three-year IMA renewal for the agreement for the animal control services. This is inter municipal agreement with the town of Agawam. We've been doing it now. I see the finance committee, Mr. Diddy in the back. Mr. Diddy, how many years have we been working with Agawam? Has it been three?
Oh, no, it's, it's been at least, this might even be the third one we're doing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, okay. So we have a recommendation from
Police chief.
Police chief, who is the department head for the animal control officer. He's read over the agreement, and he recommends another three-year contract. Discussion?
This is the, gentlemen, this is the same formatted document that was worked out by counsel for both the town of Southwick and for the city of Agawam, and so this is just a different update of it, new dates. The economics are still working as far as the chief is concerned, the cooperation between both departments, and I met with the mayor last week about this.
Carl, I'm gonna ask this question. When we were in negotiations with everybody, the cost of our utilities, electricity and heat, was that, I mean, we're talking about a three-year agreement here, and we've seen what, we've already heard from our advisor about the cost of fuel doubling this winter. Was any of that taken into consideration before we decide whether or not to sign this agreement tonight?
I don't think that, that was something that the chief was looking at, because obviously, whether you're gonna have Southwick animals in there, you're already paying for those costs.
All right, any other discussion?
The only thing that I noticed in this contract, the successor contract to the previous contract, is that there was a, this is a fiscal year twenty-three, it's gonna match fiscal twenty-two and then ride for three years at the same amount. No objection to it. I mean, obviously, we work closely with our partners in Agawam on a lot of different issues, but and, and it looked like the last one was a bit of a rampant, so.
Okay, then I need a motion to authorize the chair to sign the agreement.
Doug Mogan, so moved. Jason Paul, second.
Rust Fox, we'll call vote, Rust Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason Paul, aye.
And Robin, you have the original agreement to sign there? I see, I got the food pantry. Okay, then why don't I sign this one? And I'll give it to you. And if I need to sign. Wait a minute, there may be two copies here. Yes, there's two copies here, so I'm gonna sign both. Yeah, there's two signed. All right. The, we have a invitation here for the Second Annual Western Mass Merial, Merorial Cup Golf Tournament, which will be held Monday, October third, twenty twenty-two, at the Ranch Golf Club in Southwick. And our good friend over in West Springfield, Mayor has invited us to, or take, if we so choose. It's a hundred and forty dollars a player, five hundred and sixty per foursome, includes eighteen holes of golf and a cart and lunch. And all the money raised for this tournament will be donated to Special Olympics Massachusetts. So we'll take that as an FYI, and maybe even if we don't participate, maybe we could send some sort of greeting and welcome them to Southwick, since I'm sure there'll be a lot of our good friends from our surrounding communities there. Carl, can you work on something like that?
Yeah, I'll look into it, sir.
Thank you. All right, next thing I have is to approve the September sixth, twenty twenty, primary election. It will be for precincts one, two, and three, here at the Town Hall Senior Center, four fifty-four College Highway, South Massachusetts, Tuesday, the sixth of September, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, seven AM to eight PM, for the following purposes. To cast their votes in the state primaries for candidates of political parties through the following offices. Governor for this Commonwealth, Lieutenant Governor for this Commonwealth, Attorney General for this Commonwealth, Secretary of State for this Commonwealth, Treasurer for this Commonwealth, Auditor for this Commonwealth, Representative in Congress, First District, Counselor, Eighth District, Senator in General Court, Berkshire, Hampden, Franklin, and Hampshire District, which we will now be part of, along with about forty-five other communities. Represented in the General Court, Third Hampden District, that's our current representative, Representative Goldiga. We now will have ten communities to represent. District Attorney, Hampden County, and the High Sheriff, Hampden County. So with that, we will affix our signatures and have this posted. Okay, the next is a request to approve a thirty-day award of sick bank leave for Mr. C. Bedore, who's out on a medical. I need a motion to approve.
Doug Mogan will make that motion.
Jason Paul, second.
We'll call vote, Rust Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason Paul, aye.
The next is to approve a community food pantry agreement under the CDBG grant, fiscal twenty-one award. Carl, you do such a great job explaining how the procedure here, of how we apply for the grant, we get the grant, then we sign the agreement.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, essentially, you know, we did a grant application. And of course, these federal fiscal funds, the federal fiscal year is always behind the state and the local government ones, because they're, they're under a different cycle of budgeting than we are in Massachusetts. Their starts in October. So what happens is, go through the process, we work with the Regional Planning Agency. They come in and do public hearings, which of course Erica and Gabe had helped facilitate before the board. And then along the way, once those are awarded, then the town has to sign a contract with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We become, we become a vendor of the Commonwealth, which is unusual. Most people are vendors of ours. So once that's done, and the state contract is approved, then the Regional Planning Agency, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, then signs a contract with the town of Southwick, which, for a dollar amount that's included in the grant application to the state, to administer it as if they are a community development agency of the community. So when we get grants, we, we expand their service through the form of a contract. And when we don't have grants and don't have resources in other years, then we contract that service, because we are what's called a non-entitlement community, which means we have to apply for our grants competitively each year, whereas other communities that might have a different profile, they get theirs, you know, just automatically, they just need to work out the details with the state. So now that we've worked out a contract for these grant funds and for the Pioneer Valley to administer this, we now go on to other outside entities that would have to be put under contract. In this case, this is with the food pantry, which was one of the programmatic items that was going to be addressed. So we use a, an acceptable state-formatted contract, as well as one through the Regional Planning Agency, and that is what you're signing before you this evening, is to contract the service for the food pantry to administer some programmatic and services on behalf of the town, but under these funding sources.
Thank you, Carl, for doing that. All right, so I need a motion to authorize the chair to sign the agreement between the town of Southwick and our community food pantry.
Doug Mogan will make that motion.
Jason Paul, second.
We'll call vote, Rust Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason Paul, aye.
Mr. Chairman, while we're passing that down, just a reminder that there's a, I believe there's a rotary concert event tomorrow. And I believe tomorrow night's concert actually benefits the food pantry, and so if you plan on attending, bring some things with.
Well, since you mentioned it, I'll read it off. August tenth, which is this Wednesday, is the opening act will be Jack and His Guitar, opening for the Bad News Jazz and Blues Orchestra, which performed at the two hundred and fifty celebration at Wally Park. These concerts are free. They do have a food truck there, they do sell beverages there. But more importantly, as Mr. Mogan has said, this event is also collecting donations to support Southwick's our community food pantry. So, I mean, last week they had a tremendous turnout for a show, and they tell me it's supposed to be cooler this Wednesday. So I would ask everybody to attend, it's a great night, and also bring some non-perishable goods. They will have the food truck there that we got through the community block grant and provide some boxes for people to put things in. All right, thank you for mentioning it, Doug.
No problem.
Okay, next thing I have is Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Financial Warrant Number Twenty-four for Services Administered in Fiscal Nineteenth Community Assistant Program in an amount of one hundred and fifty-five dollars. I need a motion.
Doug Mogan will make the motion.
Jason Paul, second.
Okay, is this the original that I have or no? All right, we'll sign it. All three signatures. Jason. Then you can pass that down to to Robin, please. Okay, the next item I have is to appoint a representative to the FRTA, which is the Franklin Regional Transit Authority. They're the authority that we have an agreement with that runs our senior bus. So normally, the CAO would be designated, and then we, a lot of times, will designate a member of the or representative suggested by the director of seniors. And she has given me the name of Carol Smith would like to be the representative. So I would need a motion for both the CAO and Carol Smith to be our point people to attend meetings of the FRTA Advisory Board.
Doug Mogan will make that one.
Jason Paul, second.
All right, so we'll call vote, Rust Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason Paul, aye.
All right, the next thing we have is concerning the parking that we have at the boat ramp. And this is pertaining to a parking lease with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Actually, it's with the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance and Fish and Game. And this license would be something we could do for a year and can be extended as needed until we have the opportunity to draw up a lease, which would also require a town meeting vote, so.
As well as a, a vote of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Legislature.
Correct.
So, so because that's gonna take time to renew that lease, the mechanism you use in the interim are licensing agreements. So Attorney Coyle is working with the appropriate state agency that is overseas ownership of properties on how to deal with that mechanism.
Okay, so the motion needed is to authorize the chair to sign the document once it's finalized.
So moved.
Jason Paul, second.
Okay, we'll call vote, Rust Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason Paul, aye.
Okay, going to new business. All right, the first thing under new business is to discuss the Mass General Law, Chapter two six eight A, special municipal designation. It's a request from the Park and Rec Commission. They held a meeting on Wednesday, August third, twenty twenty-two. The commissioners voted unanimously to request for Chapter two sixty-eight A designation for the Park and Rec Commission as a whole to the select board. Carl, you want to just, for everybody's edification, explain exactly the purpose of this?
Yeah, this is very similar to what you had to do in January for the the planning board, because one of their elected members was a, a department head now in the form of Mr. Sutton. So the way these disclosures and approvals work is if you're on a board, whether it's appointed by the select board or generally elected, the entire board must be designated under two sixty-eight A, and then the individuals that would have an issue would then either go to their appointing authorities, or if they're elected, they would then file the necessary disclosures with the town clerk's office. So this is gonna be the same thing, because on the Park and Rec, you've got some people that work for some area businesses that are vendors of the town.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve and designate the Park and Rec Commissioner as special employees.
And just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, the, the select board are already by, by law are special municipal employees by definition.
That is correct. In a community under ten thousand, they're automatic.
Correct. So just for example, other employees, Michelle Hill, Lisa Anderson, John, I keep saying Goodard, but it's Goddard, Goddard. Wendy Cordero, Keith Strongbren, Dennis Clark, Randy Brown, Charles Dunlap, Gene Nielsen, Russ Anderson, boards, planning board, vendors, you know, a lot of our inspectors, wiring inspectors, plumbing inspectors, because they all also do full-time work. And then as Mr. Mogan said, automatically, the board's select board. So motion is?
Motion is made to designate the Park and Rec Commission as special municipal employees.
Second.
Okay, we'll call vote, Rust Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next thing is, and I think we all got an email from Okay, the next thing is, and I think we all got an email from. Uh, to take a look at the South of Planning Board Comprehensive Impact Statement Handbook. Uh, for the town of Southwick, this is in a draft form. I don't think we need to, um. Finalize it tonight. But I think I'm gonna let Mister Moblen, since he had fifteen years on the planning board. Kind of peruse it and make any suggestions maybe at our next meeting. Uh, that you think, uh, necessary, or suggestions.
Yep.
That'll be with you.
Absolutely.
Okay. So Robin, if you could carry that under old business, then that's new. Alright, Carl, new business?
Did we miss the handbook update?
Yeah, Mister Chairman, uh, in terms of back to the new business with the employee handbook.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanna let you know, I, I, I have met recently with Labor Council. And we are reviewing that to see what changes in language have to be modified in it to reflect. Other, um, negotiated agreements with different collective bargaining units to make sure that that document is consistent with those. As well as changes in law, uh, different types of policies, laws. Um, I know there's something Jason and I were also talking about how the, um. The military leave, um, language that we have in our book is a couple of, um, versions of Mass General Law updates. That are behind, so that's another thing that council is, um, is looking at the various. Uh, legal law updates in that area so that we can provide those to the board so that, uh, you can make a decision at some point. Uh, if we end up going to address that issue, that would probably take a town meeting vote. To make that change that we would then later incorporate into the employee handbook. But this is just to let you know that council is working on that issue, because we're sort of in between. Negotiating with collective bargaining units where last year we had like six of them all at once. So we're taking advantage of this time to catch up on other things, sir.
Thank you. Any other new business, Mister Steinhardt?
Uh, let's see. The, I anticipate having the deputy fire chief interviews at the next meeting on the twenty-second. Because the assessment center is all set up and it's gonna be going through that process. And, um, that was the only other thing I had for new business.
I had a couple of things under new business, uh, one we've already taken care of, the Rotary and the Concert and Food Donations this Wednesday. Uh, two was the, uh, I got the phone call from Jeff. Uh, from Lake Management concerning the testing of lakes, and we talked about the beach test and things like that. I did talk to our director of health. Uh, about what's legally supposed to be tested and what, what he can test. So, but I think we could reach out if it's okay with this board and have some other discussions with the board of health. Uh, I think at the very least, I don't have any problems, and they did make a notification. Uh, today about the, uh, town beach being closed. Uh, and we could, uh, see whether or not, under the statutes. If we can test other areas of works that are not beaches, so. Uh, so if with this board's permission, if, uh, I reach out to the board of health, any problem? Not at all.
None, sir.
Okay. Alright, the other thing that it's, I'm gonna list under new business, uh, because I know. People have heard about it, but that's the closing of, uh. Claus Anderson Road, uh, portions of it from, uh, for the next, uh, eight to ten weeks, beginning this Wednesday. Uh, there will be signage up. Uh, I know this is, uh, they've already had discussions with the school concerning buses and emergency vehicles. Police and fire are aware of it. Uh, it does make the, uh, things a little more difficult, but I think, uh, it's well worth it. By the time they have the new culvert in, uh, it should, uh, take care of the flooding issues there. Also will be wider because it's a very narrow culvert. So, again, just so people know, uh, portions of Claus Anderson Road will be shut down, there will be detours. Uh, so if you can avoid that area. For a couple of months, it'd be greatly appreciated, I'm sure to all the neighbors. And that's all I had under. Uh, and I should also mention, they're also doing a drainage project at the beginning of Claus Anderson. Coming off of College Highway, so I'm not sure how long that's gonna take, is Randy on the, uh.
Uh, I don't believe so, sir, I think he's on, uh, leave.
Okay, okay.
But that's tangential to the other project from, that was the one we met with the secretary.
No, this is a separate drainage. Right, right, I, they, uh, I talked to Randy. And they've scaled back that the property owner passed away in mid, in during the process and, uh. So that was admitted from this project.
Gotcha.
But they did do the portion on Curtis Road. So if you go to Curtis Road, you'll see a natural, uh, method of slowing water down. That looks pretty impressive and, uh, uh, should work and help to alleviate, uh, again, all the, uh, flooding in that area. Which makes for a very unsafe, uh, situation. Um, new business, Mister Moblen.
Uh, the only new business is high-speed internet sub is meeting tomorrow night for our second meeting. In the last couple of months, we're gonna review some, uh. Financial data that was provided by Whip City Fiber, preliminary financial information, and I believe you've also invited the town attorney. To talk general process.
Very informal, it was very informative meeting that we had Doug with them.
Yes, but I wanna convey that, all of that data back to the entire subcommittee. So that they can send a recommendation back to this board, and Carl, you alluded to in the handbook, is that. Update regarding the military leave type of scenario?
Yep. Okay, you mean, you, you, you mean the, uh, the number of days?
Yeah, or taking a bit, you know, having to use a vacation day for military service.
Well, I'm not, I, I, I don't have that book in front of me, so I'd have to look at how that all works. Some of that also falls under the twenty-eight day cycle. For how the Federal Labor Standards Act works when you're trying to, uh, compute the payroll of people. So that may not, that in of itself, that legal update wouldn't be in the handbook, because the handbook has to be. Everything across, um, organizationally across the board. The other thing you might be, uh, talking about might have to be addressed as a separate M O A. With a bargaining unit, so let's keep those things separate and distinct.
Right, very well, I just wanna be very clear, there was, um. No town employee, if they're called up for military service. Um, or choose to perform their military service on their days off, should be penalized financially. Or by vacation or personal days, in my opinion. And if we need to take any action there too, to ensure that, um. I'll be the first in line to work on that.
Right, well, the, the, uh, the police chief is, um, going through that process with Labor Council now.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, the only other piece, that's old business, carry on.
Jason, I have one at this time, okay. Then we're moving to old business, the first thing I have is, uh. We, uh, put off till tonight, making a decision on the liquor license. For a seasonal all-alcoholic beverage restaurant license to be exercised at fifty-one John Mason Road. That's the premise of the, uh, disc golf course. We had, uh, the original meeting, I, I forget what date it was, and then we continued it to. Seven twenty-five, twenty-two, and took in, uh, a considerable amount of more information. And, uh, people wanted to digest that, but I said that we would make a decision tonight. Uh, so, discussion?
Not for me, sir.
Discussions.
This is all new for me, um, are, are we allowed to have conditions on the horses? There is, my biggest concern is there needs to be a last call, like every other alcohol establishment.
I, I think that's, you know, I'm, I'm not, I don't wanna speak out of turn, I will double check that, uh. Uh, just like most liquor establishments do have a last hour before the closing. Uh, we can look into that, but I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
That's my only concern.
Okay, um, I went.
Application.
Is it in the application, is the hours of the app?
As the, just my opinion, I'd have to go back to the file, I have it right here. Um, it's in the application of the hours. And as a commissioner, it's your. Right to recommend or make a motion to put a stipulation in, in a license as to the closing time. If, and on a given day, I know we've done it, we've had like liquor licenses, they had in their application ten o'clock on Sunday, we'd never let anybody. Do anything before noon on a Sunday, just as a matter of course, we'll write that right into the license. So certainly within our purview to do that.
Just even following tips, training tells you that you do that, so, and everyone's supposed to be tip certified. Uh, we can get some clarification, because it's a little, might be a little challenging, because they're talking about closing at dusk. Well, what's, what's dusk?
Changes over time.
Right, uh, so, but why don't we try to look at the bigger picture and then we can add that as a, you know, clarification. Uh, I went out and looked at the operation that they're running there, it's a beautiful operation. Um, it's quite similar to the game of golf, actually, uh. And then I did go to, uh, Edgewood, I did go over to the ranch. Looked at how they're running different things and alcohol involved in those, so. And, uh, I think it was stated that all of our golf places with liquor licenses are in residential neighborhoods. Uh, this particular site is, is isolated, there's no better way to describe it, it was isolated. Uh, but they have courses that, uh, for the experts, it's two and a half hours, so. They don't have carts, uh, see people, uh. Like in the game of golf, going around with, uh, alcohol, or, uh, you know, not to say they can't carry it, but, uh. It, it seems that the, uh, people that are proposing this have changed their business plan a little bit. And are just looking to offer some, uh, beverages after people have completed the thing. When I was up there, there was gentleman in the Chinese sun playing, uh, there were some older folks, uh, playing. And then there was, uh, another, I guess you call my younger gentleman, uh, playing by himself, but, uh. We've, I've checked, they've never had any issues out there, never any complaints. My, my gut reaction is, and you're never gonna have everybody happy. Uh, I'd be in favor of granting it, and then let the A B C determine whether or not that chapter twelve. Uh, whether or not, uh, their attorney, which attorney is, is right on that, uh, but that would be up to the A B C commission boss and to. Uh, determine that. Uh, having said that, I'll make my standard speech. That this board takes alcohol very seriously. Liquor licenses are not a right, they're a privilege, and if it is granted, it better be enforced. Uh, people have to be tip certified, and, uh, but we're not creating a bar here. I mean, this is a seasonal operation, we're just gonna pick the tables and, uh. Umbrellas, and that's about it, working out of a small. For better purposes shed, so, that would be my thoughts. Uh, if there's any other thoughts or discussion. I, I will accept the motion at this time.
Mister Chairman, I'd make the motion to grant the license to, uh. Was it TAP something or other, correct, was the formal name?
Yeah. I don't have the.
It was right in front of me, and I put something right on top. Uh, Disc Tap LLC DBA New England Disc Golf Center, new seasonal all-alcoholic beverage restaurant license. At fifty-one John Mason Road.
Can you second?
After digging deeply, I will second it.
Okay, we'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moblen, aye.
Jason Paul, aye.
Okay, and I'm sure the A B C is going to review that, so. We'll cross that bridge, uh, when we get to it. Uh, the next thing I have here is, uh, we gave everyone the opportunity that wanted to speak on appointments. Uh, as far as I know, the list here was attached with all these names. So the first thing I have on this list is board name Agricultural Commission. And as I see it, there is three one-year associate positions that are listed. Paige Fury, Brett Paulson, Zachary Barnett. So, I would accept a motion if someone wants to make a motion.
I wanna hold tight on that for a minute, I wanna, I gotta look something up.
Okay.
Move on to a different one.
Alright, I will go down to building inspector, one year, that would be Kyle Scott. Accept the motion on that.
So move. Second.
We'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moblen, aye.
Jason Paul, aye.
Okay, I will go down to Board of Appeals, and it looks like we have a. Uh, Paul Gregwire as a member. And we have Michael Parent as an associate, one year. And we have Thomas Stapleton, one year, and Mister Gregwire would be three years. Need a motion?
Robin, we've received. Letters from those, from those members that wish to be appointed?
Yes.
So move.
Second.
We'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moblen, aye.
Jason Paul, aye.
Okay, going down to the Cable TV Advisory, it's an ad hoc committee, they're one-year appointments. Uh, they should be finalizing this, uh, within the next couple of months, but we need them. Uh, to reappoint them, one year would be Paul Conley, one year would be Sue Fox, one year would be Thomas.
Thanks, Doc. Put it in this, and Bangston is.
Bangston, okay, need a motion?
So move.
Second.
We'll call vote, Russ Fox will abstain.
Doug Moblen, aye.
Jason Paul, aye.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, you ready to go back to agriculture?
No. Sorry.
Alright, Council on Aging, three-year appointment, Harvey Holm. Holm, 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 Holm. And this would be a three-year. Need a motion?
So move. Seconded.
All in favor? Uh, I'm sorry, we'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moblen, aye.
Jason Paul, aye.
Alright, we're going to Cultural Council, these are three-year appointments. Steve Brzezinski, Maria Gallo, Pauline Thomas. Need a motion?
So move.
Seconded.
We'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moblen, aye.
Jason Paul, aye.
Okay, uh, District School Committee is a vacancy, it's been advertised, that's a joint meeting with the. Regional School Committee, elected members from the town of Southwick in this select board. And that is to fulfill the remainder of the term of Jonathan Schontz. Who resigned, what's, when's the deadline for that one, Robert? Okay.
I believe it's August twelfth.
Okay, okay, August twelfth, to submit, uh, letters of interest to the school. Uh, which then will send over copies of everything for us. Alright, so that's on hold, and, uh, I think there was another one that, uh. So. Economic Development Commission, one year, Amber Block. Serena Fuller, Mike McCann, McMahon, Craig Samuelson. And Susan has moved out of town, is that correct? That's Mike. Okay, she's moved out of state, that was Michael McMahon, chairman of the Economic Development Commission, it was speaking. So, need a motion? So, need a motion on those four? One-year appointments.
Should we get a letter of resignation? Our appointment's up anyway, right?
Right.
All right, Doug, so moved.
Seconded.
Okay, we'll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Okay, we're going to the.
And the only reason I mentioned it, Mr. Chair, just.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Jason. So, the reason I mention it is because there are, this EDC does have members that live out of town. She's way out of town, but.
Right.
If it was not an expired term, but it's fine.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to the High Speed Internet Committee. And Doug Mowgli, one year, Chris Boyd, one year, Marlene Quinlan, one year, Alicia Sullivan, one year, James Johnson, one year, Jessica Bishop, one year, Bob Boyd, one year, Ian Crispell, one year, Jason Chubierre, one year, and David LeBunberg, one year.
Mr. Chairman.
I will make.
Strike Alicia Sullivan.
Okay.
She had resigned and it has not propagated through yet.
Okay, so we're gonna cross off the one-year appointment of Alicia Sullivan.
And I was the, uh, select board appointee previous.
Okay.
Subject to the reappointment.
Okay, so I will, uh, ask for you to make the motion.
I will make that motion.
I will second. We'll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay. Historical Commission. We have three years, would be Cassandra Bott. And then we have a letter of interest from Robert, is it Robert? Richard. Richard Marcel, who sent us his resume and his interest in becoming a member. But he did not choose to speak, so. And that would be a two-year appointment. So can I have a motion? Either for both or a motion for one or the other.
I'll make the motion for both.
Jason Perron, second.
Okay, we'll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, we're going down to Lake Management. First thing is a three-year appointment for Deb Ra as a full member. And then a one-year appointment for the two associates, W.K. Phillips and Rick Wyler?
Wyler.
Wyler. Okay, need a motion?
Doug Mowgli will gladly make that move.
Jason Perron, second.
We'll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, and then Lake Management Canal Commission, which is basically a subcommittee of lake management. And three years is Deb Ra and one year is, uh, W.K. Phillips as a associate member. I can have a motion.
Deb, you're good? So moved.
Seconded.
We'll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, sealers and weights and measures, even though it's a municipal agreement with our sister city of Westfield, I'm told that they'd still like us to make the appointment, uh, for our, when they put the town seal on our, our things. And that would be Dennis Clark. So I need a motion, uh, for one year for, uh, sealer of weights and measures.
We, we still appoint a sealer of weights and measures for our town.
Apparently because discussions with Westfield, Carl, am I correct in this?
Carl's wrong.
Okay, uh, that's my discussion with the C A O that the city of Westfield, you know, when we put the stickers on, uh, so it says, uh, Town of Southwick.
So moved. Seconded.
Okay, we'll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
We could write that in just for clarification. Okay, we're going down to sealer, uh, yeah, sealer, sewer implementation committee. These are one-year appointments. We have Freda Brown, Jerry Petra. We have Brian Franka, Randy Brown. And we do have a vacancy that's been published. But we can at least have these four members on there. Very limited number of meetings because the last two sewer projects were voted down. So there hasn't been a lot of activity, but there is, but some interest expressed by, uh, informal, expressed, uh, interest by, uh, Southfield, Connecticut. So it might be good if we could get another member on there just so that if they did have to take a vote, we wouldn't end up with some sort of tie if necessary. But anyways, I'll accept the motion on those four.
Uh, Mr. Brown's is a life term as long as he's DPW director.
Correct.
So that the Freda Brown, Jerry Petra, and Brian Franka is, is actually the motion, I think.
I, I think you. Okay, you're correct.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we'll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay. Now we're going back to the front page, back to the A's. Ready? Take the chance.
The reason I'm taking so long is I thought there was an email from FER at one point regarding.
Your resignation?
That Dennis resigned? Is that what you're looking for?
No, that appointment's expired and, and I don't believe he submitted a letter to, for reappointment, correct?
Right.
But was there a letter of resignation?
From Dennis.
I believe his term has expired. The term has expired. And I don't believe he submitted a letter of interest for reappointment, correct?
Correct.
Right, so I need a, I need a motion. Looking for a motion or discussion.
I'll make a motion, uh, as follows. For Agricultural Commission, Associate Member Sage Fury, Associate Member Brett Coulson, Associate Member Zachary Barnett, Member Marissa Cook Obergan, and Member Ronald Taccini.
Okay, and the first three for one year, the other last two were for three years.
I have a second to that motion.
Okay, we'll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, we, can you get clarification, Robin, on that other issue for Dennis? And find out what's going on? At least those are done. Okay. Okay, I apologize. I skipped over one. Conservation Commission. I have a three-year select, uh, for Kevin Solak, member. Three years, Marissa Cook Obergan, three years, member. And we have one from Andy Reardon, three years, who's, would like to be considered.
Mr. Chairman? You're allowed to speak on the good position.
Not at this time. Not at this time.
It was under old business.
Sure, not at this time. Not at this time. All right. So, what we're doing here tonight is just handling reappointments. We're not handling vacancies that occurred after the posting. So we're, we're only talking about two tonight. Both of them, three years. So I need a motion or discussion, one or the other.
Discussion?
Looking for a motion.
I've made a lot of motions. Anyone else want to make?
I'll make the motion. Point. Kevin Solak and Marissa Cook Obergan.
Okay, so a second. I hear no second. Is there any other motions?
I'd make a motion to appoint Kevin Solak and Andrew Reardon to the Conservation Commission.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. We'll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Jason Perron, no.
Okay. All right, that completes that. So now let's go over to, uh, old business. Okay, North Pond Violation, six meeting with Department of Mass with Department of Fish and Game, DPW. That meeting has been scheduled for August thirtieth. Hopefully we can get all the parties together. See if we can't see exactly, uh, where everybody's at and ways to address, uh, many of the challenges that we are facing down there. I've had people come and show me different pictures that aren't, aren't very good. Obviously pictures that show potential for serious erosion, uh, with, uh, things going right into the lakes. Had numerous neighbors call me, uh, with concerns about trespassing on their properties, uh, people on their docks, so. My, my general thought on this, uh, I'm going into that meeting and hopefully we can solve, solve those challenges. But, um, we've got to take the blinders off, you know, and, and realize we got, we got, we got serious challenges that need to be addressed. Because there's liability issues. It, it was scary that, I shouldn't say scary, but when the director of, uh, Park and Rec told me that they had an incident down at our town beach that, uh, people were getting adversarial because they were, had to pay to go to the town beach. And they said, no, no, we want to go to Southwick's Free Beach. You know, the next thing I know, somebody's on a cell phone and said, oh, we're at the wrong place. Got to go someplace off of South One. And then I saw pictures of vans bringing in groups of people. I mean, in parking on the road, parking on side streets. So, uh, so in addition to the trash, uh, Board of Health is extremely concerned about what they saw down there. Only other thing that I would say on this, and I don't know if you guys want to say anything. It wasn't this board, it wasn't Russ Fox who said, we don't have a beach down there. It was Commonwealth of Massachusetts and Fish and Game in the meetings that we had when we signed the contract. So I don't have anything against people. You know, people go out on their boats and jump into the water, all different parts of, of Congress. But what we don't have is a official beach there with lifeguards to protect people or testing to see, uh, if there's bacteria in the water. When I went down there last fall with the Fish and Game and D E P, the gentlemen told me that that shoreline should look just like the rest of the shoreline around North Pond. It should be allowed to grow back to its natural state. That there should not be anything there that looks like a beach. That's what was said in the meeting. That's what, uh, was said originally, uh, by Fish and Game. So, but we will get to the bottom of it. We had some comments under public comment. And I will do the research and I will talk to Fish and Game and D E P and tell them this is what was said under public comments and find out exactly what their position is. Because they're the people that are, are giving us the guidance. Any other comments on that?
At my own peril. I guess it can be a beach if in the forties someone brought sand in there and made a beach there. That doesn't make it a pre-existing beach that can, to let the land return to its natural state. I'm all for having passive recreation over there. Hiking and walking and enjoying the, the beautiful parcel that the, the townspeople voted to, to preserve and protect and purchase. And I, again, resent the insinuation that somehow we were complicit in trying to pave it and develop it and all this other nonsense, right? It's gotta stop. Everybody's got a vested interest in taking care of that North Pond piece. To come up here again and accuse the, the, the current select board members or any of the individual members, including myself, of anything else is just wrong. And assuming if I don't say anything, that I must be a conspirator in some grand scheme and somebody's head is again just wrong. I will take my time and compose my thoughts in writing to the chair so that he can bring those to those meetings because as the chair of another commission knows that, uh, a meeting, if we were, have more than one select board member at that meeting, it would have to be a posted meeting of the select board. So we have designated the chair to attend that meeting in our stead. That's all Mr. Chair.
Jason?
I have nothing.
Okay. Next thing, the Town Hall HVAC Design Work Almost Complete, which is good news. We've begun, uh, having the lawyers, uh, go back and forth trying to set dates for the Sewer System I M A. That's the agreement with Westfield, uh, which, uh, takes care of the sewage from the town of Southwick for a fee. We need to have those, those discussions because it would have to go in front of the annual town meeting as of just different fiscal periods that would be affected. Even though the agreement goes into the next fiscal period, it would end before the, the, the new, uh, current, excuse me. It's still in effect in the current fiscal period. It would end sometime in the new fiscal period. So that's the importance for getting the, uh, attorneys to get together. Let's get the process going and we can go from there. All right, we've already made our decision on Disc Golf. The Deputy Fire Recruitment, uh, Carl has already mentioned that we have two candidates. We're going through the assessments right now. And then, uh, hopefully we'll have two candidates in front of us, uh, to interview and make a, a recommendation. All right, last thing on old business is the Conservation Commission vacancy. It's been posted. We let it run for a minimal of two weeks before we close. You know, being the summer, we want to give everybody an opportunity to apply. Talking about the Conservation Commission vacancy. So that is why it was not addressed tonight. Uh, just for clarification on that. All right. Old Business, Mr. Steinhardt, or he, I'm sorry, who left?
Who's gone?
Old Business, Mr. Mowgli.
Just to point a clarification. Earlier in the meeting, and this is strictly just documentation, payrolls, payables, payroll and minutes. There are two special payables warrants, twenty-three oh five B that we ran through very quickly. One was for ten thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents and one for ten thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. One of those is incorrect and there's probably only one ex, one acknowledgement for ten thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and either fifty or fifty-two cents. We can argue about the two cents later. But just want to be clear, as we acknowledge those, that there was only one warrant, Article two-three oh five B. And it's, it's a scribbler's error in the agenda.
Okay, do you want to make a motion to correct that at this time?
I, so moved. So moved.
Seconded.
All right, we'll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Thank you for catching that. A lot of times I'm going down through.
To be honest, it was an email from a constituent who was observing the meeting tonight who sent it in. So thank you to them for being on the ball. Because I missed it too. I checked it off as.
I checked it off. It's my fault.
I follow you.
All right, uh, old, any other old business?
High speed. Uh, yes, one of the other things that will go live within the next couple of weeks is, and you may observe it tonight as a test on the town website on the Ag webpage, just because it's the first commission that started in A, is the new appointment website link to that. We're working on a couple of different ways to present it. And then there'll be a whole separate website that you can just click over and see every appointment with its period of starting and ending, name of the commissioner, um, et cetera. So you can have a look at it there. So you can have a look at it there. Very similar, one layout is very similar to the way Southfield, Connecticut, because it's the exact same product we do. So that is gonna be very helpful going forward as well.
Okay. The other old business, Mr. Mowgli.
New?
Okay, I just have one thing under old business. And I'd like to thank the director for the senior center and the Park and Rec who sponsored the senior sizzler. Last Tuesday, the 8th, at the town beach, it was quite a turnout. The food was great, our officers were, police officers were cooking the food and. Well, I was gonna say, I thought it was very helpful that the police officers decided to.
Invite the firemen.
Invite the firemen to give a demonstration on how you can roll every single piece of equipment in the town of Southwick for grilling hamburgers improperly and burning them. So it was, it was humorous and I, I say this all in jest, you know, because thank them for all they did and I think it was great that after two years of COVID, they finally got back to having a senior sizzler. So with that, I'm gonna ask that we go into executive session, not to reconvene. So our next meeting will not be for two weeks. So I'm gonna go into executive session, the motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter C, 30A, Section 21, 2 and 3, and Chapter 214, Section 1B, litigation matters. Executive session regarding Mass General Laws, Chapter C, 30A, S21, 2 and 3, Chapter 214, Section 1B, and. Let me go down and make sure I'm reading the right one. Which one is it, Doug? You got your glasses on? Okay, move to go into executive session, discuss strategy, respect of litigation, and that the chair declared that opening meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body to not to reconvene in open session. Regarding Chapter 214, Section 1B, a person shall have the right against unreasonable, substantial or serious interference with their privacy. The spirit of jurisdiction and equity to enforce such rights and in connection therewith toward damages. We'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, is everybody off of Zoom? Okay.